All right.
All right, let's call the order of the regularly scheduled city council meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four, roll call please.
Del Meyer.
Here.
Heesling.
Here.
Clinkhammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Reich.
Here. All right, at this time, anyone who wants to do citizen's input, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the records, please. Nobody's on Zoom.
It's just Sarah in on Zoom, so.
Okay, I hear no one, see, no one that wants to talk. Move the consent agenda. Anything to be held separately, or could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Heesling.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Okay, first, we have a public hearing in front of us. Uh, public hearings on proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement. Motion to open the public hearing.
Still moved.
Motion is second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Tim, do you want to go up and explain the notes and the bids we got in today? Thanks.
Okay. So I put in front of you the summary of the bids from, and to remind you, we got bids uh, from banks for this uh, for this issue. We advertised the bids for a, and gave the banks the option of either a five or a ten year scenario, and asked them to give you rates for both. Um, and so the, if you, at the middle of the page, you'll see the proposals received reference, and then the ten years are shown first, and then the five years are shown second. Um, the lowest bid on the ten year uh, came from J P Morgan Chase. They actually gave us two bids, one that is a, I would call it non-compliant, but it's a, before you draw any conclusions. J P Morgan always gives us a bid that has uh, the loan is not prepayable, so it's a ten year loan, you're gonna pay for ten years. That's just by practice, they do that, and I don't object to getting that, as long as they give us a compliant one also. So the option B is the compliant one. Uh, Fidelity Bank locally uh, bid, Science Bank, Webster Bank, and Huntington, those last two are from Columbus, Ohio. Interest rates in the low fours, four oh five out to a four forty nine. If you then go to the five year payoff, um, we list Fidelity first at a four and an eighth. You might ask why? The second place bid is a four oh five from J P Morgan Chase, that seems to be lower, correct? Um, but J P Morgan does have a requirement that, in their bids, that the city reimburses the bank for its legal counsel cost, which is five thousand. So when we factor in that cost into the equation, they're not the low bid. Um, and so we show, we show Fidelity first because they don't have that same requirement, so that's an added, added cost to the equation. Um, and then again, Webster and Huntington are uh, a little further out in terms of rate. Interest cost to the city of the five year loan with Fidelity is one hundred ninety-nine thousand, two oh three, you see that number? If you scan up to the top, the interest cost on the J P Morgan ten year is three hundred and fifty-two thousand, and Fidelity's three hundred and fifty-three thousand. Uh, so to, to add ten years to the schedule, costs the city about one hundred and fifty thousand of, of additional interest cost. Before I go on, can I pause and say, do you have any questions yet?
Just, just one quick question, um, there's only one local bank on there, is that pretty typical?
Yeah, in this market, uh, banks are not real aggressively looking for new loans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. So the question I, the question I think, if I were in your shoes, is, well, why would we choose five over ten, or ten over five? And so if you then turn the page over, I put a little chart, rather than giving you a scheduled page full of numbers, um, what I thought I'd try and do is chart out for you kind of the math of the TIF area. This loan will be paid from TIF. Um, and so the, uh, the blue bars there show the TIF income for the city in each of the upcoming decade. Um, the orangish bars show the expenditures out of the TIF if you choose the um, five year option, and then the goldish bars, expenditures, if you choose the ten year option. So before I get into the five and ten, why is the TIF income going down so much? You see how those bars are high, and then they work their way down. Several of the sub areas inside the TIF have, have, or are soon will have run their twenty year course, and so they'll, they'll have to expire, and so we do track that, um, and do show that as a reducing income. We don't have anything coming on. Now, there may be things coming on, but we don't assume that there are, so. So then there are two lines on there, and, and those two lines align with the axis on the right side, and so the, the greenish color uh, line there is the surplus TIF uh, over time, if you choose the ten year option, and the purplish color line is the surplus over time, if you choose the five year option. Now, to, to try and point out the obvious, you won't have that kind of actual surplus TIF, you have, you have, or will have, a number of things that you'll find uses for that TIF dollars on a pay-as-you-go basis, that you spent TIF money recently in Meadows, and I would expect you'll continue to do things like that. So there won't actually be that kind of large surpluses, but the point is, the, the, what I wanted to take away, I wanted to offer, is that it's a question of surplus now or surplus over time. There will, the ten year versus the five year, the five year will require you to pay larger payments for the first five years, and nothing for the next five. The, the ten year will require you to make smaller payments for the first five years, but then they'll continue on for five more. And over time, the purple line crosses the green line because of that added interest cost that we were highlighting on the, the other page, so. When you flip back to the page that has the bids, you'll see at the top, I, I highlighted suggested option. Um, this is your choice, and, but our suggestion is that we think the TIF can handle the five year payoff, and it is a fair bit cheaper to the city over time, though noting that it is higher payments in the next five years than the ten year option would be. So let me pause there and entertain any questions you have.
I just have one, um, explain to me the, the, the net proceeds, I was thinking this is a million and a half, so explain how you go to, just for, for.
Great question. So what I, what I've tried to do is, uh, the difference between the million and a half and net proceeds is fees, it's bonding costs, it's lawyer, my firm's cost, it's lawyer's cost. If the bank required an additional lawyer, we factor that into the equation. Um, so that's the differences in those expenses.
Along those lines, then, up above, you say the, the one ninety-nine, two oh three is interest cost, but down below, it says that one ninety-nine, two oh three is interest and legal, so it has the legal, but not your, your cost and the, the other legal.
That's correct.
This is bank legal cost.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And in Fidelity's case, there is illegal, so it's just all interest, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, great question. So the, it all, if you scan over two columns, you'll see the reference to all in E I C, if you see that, and that's expressed as a percentage, that's including all the fees. So interest cost over time, plus the upfront, legal, my firm's fees, et cetera, are all factored into that rate.
And, and then, when it says, there's, there's an N A under the call dates, so is that, those are the ones that they, we can't pay off early?
Correct.
Is that what that means?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak for the public hearing for the loan obligation?
Jake, have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call, the hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. We're not closed. For you now, you have resolution number twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-four, resolution taking additional action on proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement, and providing for the private placement of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series two thousand and twenty-four.
Need a motion, or you want to have a discussion first?
We can discuss it if you'd like.
I don't have any discussion, how was I gonna make a motion?
Oh, then, let's go with a motion.
I just want to give anybody a chance to.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we uh, approve their s- the suggested option, uh, with financial op, institution being Fidelity Bank, uh, based in Dubuque, uh, interest of one ninety-nine, two oh three, it's a five year note, uh, net proceeds, um, as listed on the top of the schedule.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
Yes, it's nice that, um, it's fiscally prudent, but also working with a local lender is, is just a bonus to that, so.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And I think, hopefully, the economy will stay strong, and so over the five year period, we'll be able to take care of this.
I, I do have one discussion, Beth, how much, what, what, what's our interest rate, what, what interest rate are we getting on our money that's in the bank right now?
I really don't have the, I'll get that for you tomorrow.
I, I just, I didn't know if we're making two percent?
I'll have to double check and see what the current rate is.
Okay. I just, I, I didn't know, one of the discussion things that could be, would be not do anything, but it's already on the, a motion that we do it, so.
Yeah.
I'd say call the question.
Any other discussion? Beth, roll call, please.
Heesling.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
If we were, pass is five zero. I will go to our first new business order, uh, A is resolution number twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-four, resolution approving change order number three for the Hills Mills Road Reconstruction Project. Aye.
Yeah, so the very brief update for this project, now that construction's been done for a little while, um, M S A and Eastern Iowa have finalized everything on our end, and so everything is now in the hands of the D O T for their review and potential audit process, uh, for this project. Um, so we are getting closer to closing out, this is gonna take us one step closer, but not quite there yet. Um, this change order is to balance some project quantities with the final, um, like near-final quantities, um, that Eastern Iowa agreed upon. Um, as you recall, there was a change order that was an increase with this before, now this is the decrease of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred, twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Unless, uh, many council members have questions, M S A would recommend approval of change order number three.
I do have a question, um, my question is, and it, it's either here, or it's gonna be in, on the payment part, but on the document, it says that the retainage says three percent is sixty-eight thousand dollars, but it's been adjusted to an even thirty thousand dollar, why is that?
It would probably be partial payment of retainage due, with D O T standards.
Okay.
So.
And I just, I couldn't figure, I didn't know why it switched from sixty-eight to thirty.
Yeah, it's probably just the.
Yeah, thirty, thirty thousand is what the D O T has, like, has on their claim sheet as being withheld D O T until they release that final claim.
Okay, and then, we haven't accepted it yet, so does that mean that the assessment, final assessments haven't gone out, or have they gone?
No, um, we've been waiting for the D O T to accept the project, if everything goes well, all the final assessments should come to the next meeting, we're hoping.
And then, can you, one last thing, can you update us on where we're at with the legal letters going back and forth, or are we still limbo on that, or?
Um, we gave a response, uh, and haven't heard anything.
Thank you.
But to that note, what we do know about the assess, the final assessments presented by, we've given the final assessments for the, um, attorney to review, and the final assessments are only like, just under ten percent of the total project, so I don't know if there's much argument there on that.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the change order as presented.
I'll second.
Um, I'm sorry, resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-four?
I second.
A motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Heesling.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Now, we have resolution number twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-four, resolution approving pay application number eight, the Hills Mills Road Reconstruction Project.
Yes, so with that final balancing of quantities, um, the total amount for pay application number eight comes to sixteen thousand, nine hundred, forty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Unless there's any other questions, M S A would recommend approval of pay up number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-four, um, approving pay application number eight for the Hills Mill Road Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Heesling.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Now, we have budget discussion.
Okay, just quickly, um, this is just more for your affirmation, um, just quickly summarizing our budget discussions from, um, last week. Um, one, um, the council recommendation of four percent wage increase, um, that has been included with the budget as we had prepared it. Um, two, a discussion was funding the additional police vehicle, um, and so, um, reserve funding was included, um, in the budget as that was prepared. And then, third, um, fire department funding, um, there's probably two options here. Um, I've recommend, putting fifty thousand dollars in as recommended by council from the meeting, um, there's two ways we can fund that, um, one would be to use the benefit levy, which would add point one seven nine, um, to the tax levy, or we could cut fifty thousand dollars from our current, um, equipment reserve funding, and that would have no effect on the proposed, uh, tax levy. So those are the things for council to discuss before I, um, put the budget to final, almost final, um, fruition, so next meeting, we can set the date for a public hearing on the budget, on the tax levy.
I would, uh, I would like to, um, have us reduce the reserve, um, I think I, I talked to you yesterday, Beth, and the reserve has two police cars in it, and I think that we worked it out so that, and I think with, the way we worked it out with Tom, is that we got one this year, we've got one next year, we'll have four cars, so I think we can reduce the reserve, that's my opinion.
I'm of the same opinion, if anybody else wants to speak differently.
I think that's a good idea, too. I think that's good.
Did we need to make a motion to that effect?
The, the only other thing, too, that, that just, we should talk about, in case there's anybody has some concerns, uh, this does put fifty thousand in for the fire department, so it, we're, since we're, we're talking about budget now, if anybody has issues with that, or, or comments, that they should have an opportunity to speak.
Is it possible to go a hundred thousand? That is what they're asking.
Council direction was to go with fifty thousand, so again, you have the same thing, you're gonna have to cut someplace, or you're going to have to raise the levy, so you want them to push it up to the hundred.
They're coming to us for help. They need to have the staff.
That's, I mean, that's your decision.
I know, I'm looking at you.
I know, it's decisions, you know, so, you know, we're, we're looking at the same, you know, things, you know, the, you know, you're gonna either have to cut someplace or else, the direction from the budget meeting last week was to move forward with fifty thousand dollars, and we would work into it, so.
Yeah, realistically, the, the discussion last week was, and, and I, I proposed fifty as a, as a halfway point between what they wanted and what they needed, and with, with the understanding that we may have to increase it an additional fifty next year, but let's at least get started with, with some, uh, going forward, that, that was my thought. And I know they originally asked for a hundred.
Yeah.
Um, but, a- again, I, I was trying to get, meet them halfway, so to speak, between.
For the first year.
For the first year.
But can we put it in there?
I can't, I can't speak about, I can't, I can't address anything for the, my understanding is we would potentially add another amount next year, but I can't guarantee that, but, I mean, right now, a fifty is, was my starting, was the starting point, is what I, I recall.
Yes.
So can we put it in there saying that we go fifty this year, and then raise fifty again on top of that next year? Is that something that has to be done year after year after year, they have to come back to us?
We're gonna have to wait and see what happens with, with what we've got coming in before we know what's going on.
There was a lot of questions that were still out there as well, in terms of what expenses the city is gonna have in terms of this additional employee who is gonna be on the city payroll, but is on the fire.
So you still have questions, Craig?
Well, we don't know how that'll pan out in terms of insurance and items like that, so.
Did you talk to Dave?
Yes, we have.
Or did you call him and say, hey, Dave, I have more questions?
The, these are questions that I.
Well, he's came to us twice now.
And we've made a decision on it. You can't ask us to make a decision for next year's hearing, though.
Can't put it in like a contract saying, okay, it's gonna be fifty, and then.
Karen, what'll happen is, I mean, right now, this fifty thousand dollars is really still, like, just an allotment, um, before this can even be, you know, go to the fire department, there's has to be an amendment to the twenty eighty agreement, so there, all these little things that are, we're talking about as far as the employee, and where it's all gonna go. I think as we, you know, get into the twenty eighty agreement, we go into amend it, that would probably give us a better direction as to, you know, where council want to go. Council will have to, um, amend or approve the amendment of the twenty eighty before it gets approved, so.
So right now, there's basically placeholder in the budget for fifty thousand dollars, but we're not exactly sure how we'll administer that, most likely the twenty eighty, the twenty eighty agreement, but.
Well, the twenty eighty will be the, will be the mechanism, is how it, how it finally gets into the fire department budget, but it, it'll have to, that agreement's gonna have to be amended before any money goes in. Additional money, I should say.
Or did you want that in a motion?
Um, the motion should be that, uh, you recommend moving forward with what's presented, and then with the fire department funding being, you know, cut reserves or to use the benefit levy, whatever way.
Does anybody else agree with me to go a hundred thousand, to go that route? If we can?
No.
No.
Not at this time.
It is, and I realize that, they did kind of bring it up awfully late, even though they did bring it up at the twenty twenty-one council there, and nothing was done.
I, I think the, 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 going back to the fire department, I think what we want to make sure is, this is a start, but next year, let's start, like, in October, having this discussion so that we can build that in, you know, the fifty, and, or whatever additional monies into the, into the budget next year, I think, we, we got such a late start this year, this is, in, in my mind, this, in, in fairness, this is a, you know, good faith effort, not what they wanted, but it's, it's fifty thousand more than zero.
Okay, so that, that would be fifty thousand this year?
Yeah.
And then next year, we'd have to discuss the fifty thousand again, and then on top of that?
In my mind, the fifty thousand, we're gonna change the, the, the twenty eighty agreement to include the fifty, so then, next year, that fifty would already be rolling through the, the twenty-eighty agreement, and then any additional change that we would make would be, have to be added, or that, that agreement would have to be changed again next year. This is the way I understand it.
Is that how it works, though?
I mean, we can, when it gets to be, I would say twenty eighty's gonna be the key piece here, so when we do the twenty eighty, you, even at that time, you might be able, be looking forward to fiscal year twenty-six and say, we'll agree to move this fifty thousand becomes sixty thousand in twenty-six, and seventy thousand in twenty-seven, you know, you could do any kind of steps as we're, you know, renegotiating that twenty eighty, and that'll be probably a good time to have, you know, discussion for future years.
So I, I have a question, and it may be a silly one, so I'll apologize ahead of time. The fifty thousand we're allocating right now, is that going to join the other hundred and fifty thousand that we have out there already, or is this gonna be a separate placeholder?
Well, the other money we've allocated is allocated because we have the twenty-eighty agreement, and it's how it's been. In order for them to, or receive this additional fifty thousand dollars, we're gonna have to go back in and renegotiate that twenty eighty, in order for that money to funnel back in.
Kurt, in my, in my, in my.
Yes.
Opinion is that, that fifty thousand that we're doing this year is added into the base, so next year, it will be there already, and then we would have to, it's not gonna come back out, it's, it's, so the hundred and fifty becomes two hundred, the two hundred thousand dollar base.
Yeah, okay, all right, I, I, I think you're, I, I'm, I'm good with it, I.
We don't have a twenty-eighty agreement with two hundred thousand. Right now, it's a placeholder until we update that agreement.
Right, exactly. But if you put it through the agreement, then.
Yeah, and we're all on the same page, but we're saying right now, it's not saying that, until we do that agreement. So anyhow, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, fund the fifty thousand dollars for the fire department by reducing the, uh, uh, equipment reserve, um, that, because of the extra police car.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero. Now, we have ordinance one of two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six of the building code.
Um, all these ordinances that are, for the building code, are to adjust the fees. So, and these are, we've had previous ordinances for the electric code, mechanical code, that did the same thing, so.
Basically, being on the building code, uh, committee, or, or at those meetings, and Kurt, Kurt, help me with anything I may miss here, but basically, we're just increasing the fees slightly, and the whole goal is that the fee structure will cover our costs, uh, which is why we're raising the base ten dollars, and then any other cost, if we get an increase in costs from, uh, Eastern Iowa, is it, uh?
E C I A, they do, they do the inspections, so the inspection fees.
So we pass that on, as part of, that'll be part of the fee, so that's what all three of these are.
And we're not making money.
No.
Have a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion that's, um, to approve ordinance one of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, amending the one fifty-six building code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, passed.
That actually has a roll call vote. Heesling.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Um, and in, in going along with, before we get into the next part of it, and going along with what Bob said, is there's no urgency to, do you want to, I'll, I'll defer to you, Bob, if you want us to hold these to go second and third readings, I will acquiesce to whatever you want to do.
Well, is there, we want to start the year off rolling with this, right? If we don't pass it tonight, or do we?
We, you have still, you can just still do the three readings. The, um, building season generally doesn't really kick in till March, so there's, you know, it's, it's council's discretion to either, uh, go with the statutory rule, or to go ahead and do the three readings.
I have no reason to bring them back, I mean, I don't have a reason to.
What is, but, again, there's a reason that there's checks and balances in the system, that there's three, I wouldn't mind seeing it come back one more time, then we can put it in the title. Anybody have a problem with that, or?
No, that's fine.
So then, E and F are out, and we'll move to ordinance two of two thousand and twenty-four, and ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six of the building code.
Hey, can I remind everyone to, uh, speak close to the microphone?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm making a motion to approve ordinance two of 2024, amending the chapter 156 building code.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please, Beth.
Keesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
I think we'll wait the H and I. Is that okay with everybody again?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance three of 2024, amending chapter 156 of the building codes for the electrical permit fees.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Keesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
I guess we want to move with his, him's on the line now.
Yeah, I believe he's DX3GV5S80DXQ.
I have a motion in, in a closed session for section 21.5IJ of the Code of Iowa.
Still moved?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Everyone, please leave the chamber. Thank you.
Beth, you gonna restart Zoom?
Um, just a minute, I have to pause here.